Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 19th Selectmen's Meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we'll have Citizens Input. 7:05, Paige Duncan, Economic Development Committee, Authorized Use of Funds for Market Analysis. 7:15, we originally had scheduled Board of Assessors, Randy Scollins and Hannah Laura Simons, to do a presentation on the tax rate setting process, but Randy is under the weather, so we're going to postpone that. 7:45, or reasonably after 7:05, Beth Whirling, the Craft Group, approval for overnight construction work at Patriot Place. 7:55, Special Town Meeting update. 8:05, Selectmen's update. 8:15, Town Manager's update. 8:25, Assistant Town Manager's update. And then we have a bunch of action items. Mary Beth, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seven o'clock. Anybody here for Citizens Input?
Hi.
All right. Winner winner, chicken dinner.
She doesn't mess it up.
Hi. I am usually -- is this on? Hello?
Yeah.
I'm usually long-winded, but I'm going to keep it really short. I just wanted to come by and say thank you, Bill Keegan and all of you, for your support of our nonprofit that we just started, Compa Kids. You had donated to us banners that were put up around the Patriots Place, the Common, when the Patriots were going for their fifth Super Bowl win, and we auctioned them off at an event we had Saturday night called Foxtoberfest. It was up at Patriots Place, the Renaissance Hotel. And we auctioned them off, and we raised $650 from just six of the banners, that's what we used. And we earmarked that money to go back into the town through rec programs. So what Compa Kids, our organization is about, is that we're paying for children to take enrichment, sports, arts classes, if they don't have the funds to do so. So we're doing it in about four towns, but that particular money is earmarked for Foxborough Recreation Programs. So we help local families take programs and activities, and it goes right back into the town of Foxborough. So it was very much a win-win situation. You supported us. We, the people, loved the banners. They were a very big hit. They auctioned off, and we'll take that money and put it back into town. So I was just here to say thank you a little bit about that. I also just wanted to say thank you about the support that we've been getting from the whole town in general. We had 300 people come to our event, Foxtoberfest, on Saturday. It was a huge hit. And right from the beginning, Ginny's not here, but Ginny Coppola gave us a very generous donation. Jim DeVellis is in the Rob and Ride for Kids. That's our Compa Kids team, and he's riding 25? 25 miles? You didn't do 50? What did you do, 25? 20.
My huffy won't.
I got one if you need one.
Small steps.
Yeah, 25 miles for our organization and raising money. So that's basically it. And I just wanted to say thank you and give you something a little bit from our event. It was, can I approach you all?
Sure.
So they were, we had 100 different beers, pumpkin beer, grape beer, and we had a big beer tasting, a great German band that played, and everybody had the time of their life. We raised about $6,504 for the charity.
That's great.
Excellent. That's a great one. Congratulations on that.
Thank you. So I guess that's it.
All right. Thank you. Great job.
Yes, Compa Kids is probably one of the quickest-growing grassroots groups I've seen in a long time. It's got a great board, and I've actually seen a couple of the kids that have gone through and some of the benefits. What Rachel hasn't said is the way that they're giving back to the kids in the community is pretty simple. It's families that may not be able to afford soccer or karate. So it's very simple things, and to see the kids thriving from such a simple thing, it's amazing. This group is amazing, so she does a nice job.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. 7:05, on the dot. Paige?
Turn the over to the chair here. I'm just the rep. The worker. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. Lorraine Brewer, 126 Mechanic Street, from Economic Development Committee. Just want to start off, on behalf of the committee, I want to acknowledge all of the work that Paige does for our group. She really keeps us focused, keeps us juggling all the different topics, and keeps everything moving forward for us. So, you know, I want to always take the opportunity to thank you for all of your effort. So we're here tonight to ask for funding for a market analysis for the fire station. Let Paige just describe briefly the process.
Sure. Well, we've been, as you know, the town's been working towards the development or the sale of this property for a while now. And the town's now getting ready to do the sewer project. I believe it's starting sometime around the first of October, should be wrapping up within a month or so. We actually have quite a bit of interest now on this fire station funeral home. I've been, since I've been getting so many phone calls, I've started to keep a list. I have a list of eight people interested. Now, that obviously won't, has no bearing. It's just more for our, just our edification of how much market has changed out there. And there are a lot of people interested, whether it's the sewer, whether it's the economy. We had a survey done. We picked up some square footage. We had a yield plan done, which basically shows, based on the land, how much we could fit, what size building we could fit on the property, using very general zoning and setback requirements. The number we've come up with is, it looks like about 20 units of residential could fit on there by right, and about 27 if the planning board were to waive setbacks. I don't think we're at that point yet of choosing. You know, it's almost like throwing a dart at a dartboard. You know, some people might think three units is sufficient. Some people might want to go 27. So this next step is a market analysis, which will do a couple of things. It'll help determine the market for these units and figure out sort of where the market is and make sure there is a market for it, since the town's probably going to stipulate the uses to be required through the municipal conversion permit. We might as well make sure we have, we know what we have. And it will help us sort of evaluate, you know, is there a strong market out there? Do we want more units out there? Do we want fewer? We know of other developments in downtown that might be coming along as well with housing units, so we want to keep that in mind as well. And this will also assist the town in figuring out a value. You know, now that we've got some investment with the sewer, with the property line survey, and now this, we are going to have the information. We need to make sure we get a fair market value. So we've, what we did is we solicited quotes from three different real estate firms, and we opened them, not taking into consideration the budget at that point. We chose a consultant based on the content of the proposal. It was a unanimous rate ranking by the EDC last week. JLL was selected, and then when we looked at the prices, they were within range. Someone had sent a range of 10,000 to 12,000. They were at 11,000, and so I asked them if they would honor the 10,000, and they said they would. So they're willing to do $10,000 for this, and I believe it's about six weeks' time. I know there's some concerns about releasing this information to the public just because of, at the outset, because of it could affect the value of the property. So that's something I'll defer to the town manager and legal counsel. I know that we've consulted with them on that. We're going to make sure we do, whoever needs to see it will see it, but it might not be publicly available right away, because we don't want it to be to the detriment of the town in coming up with a pricing strategy.
I think we confirmed that it qualifies for the real estate exception to go into executive session, so we can review it with the committee in executive session. So that's our plan.
So that's it. I know Dave's also on the EDC. He has a good handle on the real estate aspect, so I don't know if, Dave, you have anything to add, but...
Yeah, no, I think in trying to identify the value, you know, what is the value? Is it the appraised value based on the tax rolls, or is it the value based on the market? And to maximize the return for the community, you've got to look at it two ways. What is its value as-is in the marketplace? But more importantly, what is its value fully developed on a stabilized basis? So that's the delta between as-is and stabilized, and that's your negotiating point. And that's where you're going to maximize the return for the town. So I think this is a very important, important step. And like Paige said, it's going to provide the board with information and data points when we have to go for the municipal conversion permit, and we have to approve that. So that'll give us, you know, the right tools to make an informed decision. So I fully support this.
And we do have, in the Economic Development Committee fund, about almost 18, well, $17,690. So this would come out of the EDC's budget, which rolls over year to year. We spent a bid on survey last year, so.
Just two questions, and thank you for doing that. It's, I read through the report, and coincidentally, the vice president of the company used to be my college roommate, so it was nice to...
Oh, wow.
I know him very well, too well. And I know his work. He's actually done work in town before in different circles that I've seen, so no problem on the qualifications or the scope that's in there. So the town goes through this exercise, spends $10,000 to come up with a value of, just throw something, $500,000. Ultimately, isn't the value dictated by the public RFP process where it goes out, and the value is what people are willing to buy the site at that particular time?
I think it depends how it's structured, how the sale is structured, and, you know, I mean, you're also, like Dave said about the capitalize, like if you start to figure out that it's worth X number per unit, you can start to look ahead and say, if this is developed, what will the value be upon development? So that's something, we don't know. It might not be 500,000 anymore. I mean, we don't know. So that's sort of where this number will help identify sort of what the build-out of that is, and then obviously backing from costs and such, but gives you an idea.
But isn't it a little backwards, though? Wouldn't you focus on what you can get, how many units you can get out of it, and then put it out there and see what the value is? Because the number that you're putting out there is meaningless to a developer unless they can get the return on it, and they'll tell you what the value is, and that's what their proposal's going to be, correct?
Right. Well, that's another thing, is we're sort of evaluating the market, you know, for these, do we want to put out 27 units, 20, 15? You know, is it a tentative market where, you know, and we go to the market where the investment might not be that strong, because it's like, well, it's a dicey market? Or is it like Foxborough clearly needs these units, and then we know we're dealing with a high demand? I think that affects value as well. So this is just, you know, 10,000 is a lot in municipal finance, but like, I think in real estate, when, I think the $10,000 we'd recoup in value, it would be more than...
I'm not arguing, I mean, the 10,000 in context of the investment. But if the end result is they're going to give you a value of the property versus the development potential of the property. So they're going into it with, you can get 20 units or 27 units. Shouldn't it be the other way around? If you have a study that says, all right, here's a piece of property, three stories, this is how many units you can get out of it, that's kind of what you're looking for. They're giving you a value on a number that you're giving them. And I'm not arguing, I'm just not, just seeing the benefit of...
Right. I think this is more information. It's going to help guide the town's strategy.
Yeah, so...
Because there's a lot of decisions to be made on this.
Every developer worth a salt is going to do their own market study. They're going to do the same exact thing. They're going to come up with what a stabilized appraised value is. You know, let's say it's $2 million, okay, stabilized value. They're not going to come in and say, all right, I'm going to offer the town $2 million for it. I'm going to offer you what, probably what's appraised for on the tax rolls, which is, what? 500?
Yeah.
$500,000? So they're looking at that, at that as their margin.
But if it's a competitive bid, and they're undercutting and they're going what's on the paper at Town Hall, they're not going to win it, because somebody else is going to look at it, and they're going to give a number that they're going to, if he's just going to put a number of 500, and it's a private bid, that's one thing. But if it's public, he's going to put 500, because that's what Town Hall says it's worth, and then an astute developer's going to give you a real number.
Well, you know, just because he bids a number doesn't mean we have to accept it. You can actually enter into a negotiation on the price.
So I guess, wouldn't you be protecting against yourself against somebody lowballing you?
Absolutely.
By knowing that information?
Without having a study to back up what we perceive or what we're being told by a consultant, what the true value is, you don't know.
So it's really negotiating information for the town to have in the event that we get a bid?
Yeah, so this is just one piece of it. The other piece is, how do we want to, how do we want to put it out there? Do we want to do an RFP? Do we want to participate, you know, for a fixed time period? There's different ways that we can structure it, where we can maximize the return. I mean, granted, we don't want to be a landlord. We've proved that we can't do that in different areas. But if you, if you structure a deal and go in partnership, you contribute the land as equity into a deal with a fixed buyout at a certain period of time based on the stabilized value, I mean, that's a win-win for the town in itself. So there's different ways to structure it. This component is to identify what the supply is, what the demand is, what's going to work, because the last thing we want to do is sell it, have something go in there, and have it be an empty shell in a year from now. Whenever we dispose of the property, we want it to be successful, and we want it to thrive downtown. We don't want it to end up, as like I said, an empty shell.
No, I get it. And again, I'm not arguing, but for the government to go through an exercise and tell a developer what the supply and demand is...
Well, we're not telling them.
It's the exact opposite of what...
But we're not telling them. This supply and demand is for our edification. This isn't going to be public. We're not going to make it public to developers.
But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what we think the supply and demand is. It's what the market is going to tell you is the supply and demand. Because if we say the supply and demand is this, you might not get anything back. You know, I just hate to, you know, it's just more of a process. We've been down there so many times. If we get to the end of this, and again, the 10,000, it sounds like a lot, but in context to what's there, it's still a lot. But are we focusing in the wrong direction, rather than let's figure out what the, you know, I mean, this is a charrette. We can have different ideas, but I just, telling the market what it's worth, I think it's, I think it's just backwards. I think it's going to be...
We're not going to.
We're not telling the market what it's worth.
It's almost, it gives us a reserve. It lets us know what we're doing.
Tell the market that information. That's for our information only, so we're not required to release that information until after the bids are in. You follow me? So I guess the point is, on this, Jim, is that you're trying to determine what your value, what the perceived value is in the market, based upon all the factors that are being given to it, and what it is based on a value based on undeveloped state versus a developed state. And so what you're trying to determine is a negotiating position, and it could come back and say, look, maybe it's not the best time to market this property. Maybe the market is such that you may want to wait till the spring or something like that to do this kind of marketing. If that's the case, then maybe, then we can maybe get a better value for the property at that time. I don't know if that's the answer or not, but I'm just suggesting that. The other thing is that we want to, we've gone through this process a lot during the past few years, and, you know, we've made some mistakes along the way, admittedly. But I think what we've done is we've learned every time along the way, what's the best use of the property, how we can best develop it. Out of a lot of the conversations that we've had up to this point, we've actually learned that using it in certain, one way is probably not the best way. Now we've learned that having the infrastructure there has really, really gained value and our interest in that property, without question. I mean, we had virtually no interest in the property now. We've got seven or eight people knocking on our door.
Have you gone through the similar process like this? I just haven't seen it done this way. And I know, I'm familiar, I mean, you were in Franklin for a while. What they did in downtown Franklin was almost what I was talking about. They put out, here's the land, here's an RFP. Come tell us what you want to do, and we'll review it, rather than spending the time on trying to figure the value, because it's completely on different ends of the spectrum.
Well, I think in Foxborough, too, is very protective. So I think this is also part of the strategy. That's fine, and having the developer dictate what they want to put there is one thing, and I know in Franklin, you know, we got, we got. It's okay. But I think in this instance, it gives the control to the community, and that's what this municipal conversion permit, that's what they don't have in Franklin. It's very unique, but it allows the town to establish and give justification for their vision. And so I think that'll be what this is part of a toolbox, to figure out what we're going to do with that, and how we're going to tell the development community. I know you're concerned about that, but that's why we're checking ourselves and making sure that we know we're not being unrealistic, and that we, you know, we know that if we put it out for 10 units, that might be the density that works best for the community. We don't know, but we want to have an idea of what's sort of justifiable, and make sure we do it right this time.
Well, it doesn't happen a lot, the answer to your question. It doesn't happen a lot, because typically towns aren't in the development business. I mean, so we're, we're taking a piece of property here, and we're actually looking for it to be developed by, basically by the private sector. We would develop our own property, without question, but this is something that we're asking the private market to come in and say, you know, this is a value that we think is worth for that property. Let's develop it, and as Dave points it out, points out that maybe it's better for us to hold on to it, let it develop, and then three years from now, then sell it, because then you make a better value for the property than a developed state. I guess you don't, we don't know that answer. We won't know that answer until we actually do that kind of analysis. I mean, and that's, again, that's for our benefit to know, so that we can make the best decision going forward from the value perspective.
And honestly, the EDC's been working on this for a long time, and it's been a decision of the group. I mean, we've been working towards this for a long time, so...
No disrespect.
No, I know. I'm just saying, like, it's been a long process.
We've been doing it, and we've made mistakes. Every step of the way, we've made mistakes.
Yeah.
And we keep saying, we've been working on it for a long time. I just, I just disagree with the effort to get to a number, when I think it's an effort to get to a design that the community would like to see there versus... And then the kind of second part of this is, you look at 27 units, okay? What's happened in the Common is all the businesses are taking credit for off-site parking, with you're in so many feet of it. The library did it, you know, whatever's going to Abishan could do it. So if you look at, even say 20 units, if they're one and two bedrooms, there's no train station, and people are going to have to drive. There's no other option there. So if every unit has one and a half parking spaces, you need 30 spaces. Does a concept have parking below it, or are they using off-site parking?
No, all residential has to be onsite.
So everything that is, so it's all-inclusive? So the only issue is traffic? There's no off-street parking?
Yes. Well, assuming a restaurant would go in there, that's another thing we're checking, but that would require some off-site parking. Residential must be provided onsite.
Okay.
But we actually have plans for that. See, there's other opportunities down there as well, that we might be able to improve public parking out there if we start, once we start having an understanding of what we're working with.
Okay. It sounds like I'm arguing. I just, philosophically, I think it's going in the direction that I think is backwards.
It's a point discussion to have, because we've worked on this for a long time. We want to make sure we get it right.
So this is, this is going in the mindset of a developer, which is, you're right. It's counterintuitive from a municipal standpoint to look at it that way. But if you look at it from a developer, we have, the town has an asset. They want to develop it. They want to dispose of it. They want to develop it, but they want to make sure that through the municipal conversion permit process, that the right development is put there. And this helps you do that.
And that would be something you would have in hand, once the right project comes along.
Let me ask a hypothetical question. If this study comes back and it says, like you had said, the number 10 units is perfect for it, and Doc decides he wants to buy it for 500 grand, but he wants to put 27 units, are we going to deny him the municipal conversion?
So what's the benefit? If the market is going to tell you that? If the market from the private development is going to say, I want 27, your study only said 10, and we say, okay, that's great?
So he's going to offer us $500,000, right? He comes in, he says, I want to do 27 units. Okay, show us your market study. That's part of the municipal conversion permit process. So then there's going to be some dialogue. He might have, he might have a different study. He might have, he might be doing studio apartments to get 27 studio apartments.
But he's not going to invest in it unless, I mean, it's his markets. First of all, I doubt he's going to show you his market study. That's a private effort. And his market study is going to be what, how he finances it and what have. So if he has a market study that doesn't make sense, he's not going to develop it. You know, or he's going to fall off.
I highly doubt that if one market study comes back at 10 units, he's going, the developer's going to come back with a market study that's going to say 27 units. They're going to look at the same demographics, they're going to see, look at the same absorption rates, they're going to look at the same rent comps. It's, it'll be fairly consistent. It might be within, within two or three units of each other.
Yeah, I would say two or three.
So if that's the process, why is the town going through this, spending the 10,000 to get to the, something that the developers... And I'm glad, I know you guys have spent a lot of time, and I'm not arguing, but I just don't see that as...
We've actually had these same discussions at the EDC. So say Doc comes in and says, I'm going to give you $250,000 for that property. I know it's appraised at 500,000, whatever it is. I'm going to build 15 units, and that's what, that's all I can afford to do. Then you have another guy coming in and says, all right, I'm going to do, I'm going to do 20 units, okay? I'm going to give you $500,000 to do it. All right? Which would you choose?
Well, it depends on the way that the proposal's written. So that's why I was saying, I'd rather focus on...
Right.
Having the understanding of the density, what the town can support, and then putting it out.
That's what this market study's going to, that's what this market study's going to tell us.
It's, they're not, from what I read in this, they're not going to look at the site to see three stories, four stories, bedrooms, number one, two units.
Yeah, they are.
Not in the, not in the letter that's written, I didn't think.
Mm-hmm.
And for $10,000, it's about 40 to 50 hours worth of work. They're going to do concept designs and come up with number of units?
They're not doing designs. They're going to look at comp unit sizes, rents, comparable rents. Again, absorption rates, what's on the market, what's new, what's coming on the market, what the competition is, what other areas are doing within the catchment area. This is, this is pretty standard.
Is that what's going in the study?
Right. I mean, I don't think they'll be coming out and saying, you should do, you know, five units of this and, you know, this size. But I do think they will give us an idea of the studios are stronger, you know, the mix, the general mix. I don't think they'll design our project, but I do think they'll give us an idea of whether one bedrooms or two bedrooms are more marketable, and what the rents would be, and help the town decide sort of where they want to guide this.
And they'll also give you, you know, what will lease up? How many units within this area they think is fairly confident that'll lease up? They're not going to say, well, if you have, if you have 31-bedroom apartments and two two-bedroom apartments, that's what you should do. They're not going to say that. They're going to say, they're going to give you a range of what they think would be a successful development.
I think we're just too far on it. So if we were going to develop the land, I'd say that's a great investment, because basically we're doing the market study. But if we're not developing it, it's in the wind, because we're putting it out, and we're going to see what comes back from developers.
For almost all intents is developing it, in the sense that you are the municipal conversion people. You're going to tell the people what to build. I understand that you're not able to dictate to the market, but we're going to have an idea of what the market can bear, and we're going to go for the best we can for the town. So that's what this is doing. You are dictating to the development community what you want. doing. You are dictating to the, the development community what you want. You're the only town that has this permit, so you're gonna, you know, and we've learned a little bit from this. Let's use it, and let's give a development that is the best for the community with the best return on investment. And we're not making another misstep where we're putting something out to bid that they're gonna say this isn't supported by the market. We'll know that it is.
So, okay, so I'm understanding it better. So at the end of this exercise, there's gonna be a density that's gonna dictate the RFP. So we're gonna say, here's a piece of property, and based on everything, you have to put in 17 units?
Well, that will help the town. I don't know that it's gonna be only a money exercise. Foxborough is very special in that sense of like, community character is more than just density. So I think it will help the, the board making the decisions sort of quantify. You know, if you go with 15 units, what you're giving up. I mean, I think there would be a decrease in value based on that. But that might be okay, because the character's important. So I think this is a, you know, is gonna help you guys make this decision, 'cause it really is gonna come up to, to this five-member board on what you want to see out there.
It'll help you make a value to see.
It's gonna help you decide that, 'cause I think it's gonna be a big discussion, you know? I don't know that people are gonna want 27 units, but those that wanna see the most return might say, yeah, let's go for the bang for the buck. So it's that, it's that sort of valuation, and try to figure out what, whether it's money, or it's character, or it's somewhere in between.
Personally, through the chairs, you know, for someone who has absolutely no idea about the process, this is a learning experience for me, short of, you know, what I've read in the paper over the last few years. I kinda like having that, the idea of having that in my back pocket, making that decision six, 12, or 18 months from now. I, I, I think it is gonna be important, especially if, maybe we do get eight bids, you know, to try to compare those eight bids to what our advisor, and then come up with a game plan as we discuss it. So, you know, after listening to the conversation, I understand what you're saying too, Jim, but I like the idea. For someone like me, who's gonna be able to now compare it to other, to those bids that are coming in.
Right.
Yeah, well, I think actually, having, having this, writing the RFP with this information, then we're not leading anybody down a path that may or may not have happened before. So as long as everybody's going into it knowing exactly what the town minimum requirements are, or however you wanna word it. One other question. How much to date have we spent on this property, trying to get rid of it? Does anybody know that number?
We've really undone, we did the survey.
Survey was 7,000, but I don't know what from the auction, you know, prior to that, we've only spent about 7,000 on that survey.
Much did that auction cost us?
I don't know what the...
Twenty something, about $20,000.
So we've already got a good chunk of money into this property?
Thirty, well, this would be thirty, less than 40,000.
Interesting thing about the survey is we picked up 2,500 square feet per floor. So actually picked up almost 6,000 square feet of rental space, so...
So that was, that was well worth it.
Well presented. I appreciate that.
It's a good conversation.
And it, it comes full circle at the end, 'cause how much have we spent? How much time would have gone by? And never, you know, 10, 20 years of no taxes coming in on it, maintenance. Granted, the DPW uses it a little bit for storage in the winter, but it's been a drain financially a little bit, time-wise, all your groups going through this, the RFP process. I just wanna make sure the next step, we're not saying, well, you know, we've been making mistakes, mistakes all the way. This, you know, I wanna get the most bang for the buck and just nail it this time, and not come back with more studies, you know?
Me too.
We wanna get it out there. Now with the Orpheum, you know, taking off, it's, it's, time is of the essence, you know? So I'm hoping by around, by the beginning of next year, we can start, you know, our next step and strategy of disposing of it, because...
And the sewer will be in place.
Yeah, we're almost there.
There you go, so...
All these things are starting to complement this whole situation, so now's the time when the momentum's hot, let's, let's try and get as much done as we can.
So the interesting thing is, the same discussion we had here...
Yep.
Was almost identical to the...
I can imagine.
To the discussion at, at the EDC. So it was good. It was good. Doc, can I have a motion?
Yeah, move to approve or authorize the use of funds for the market analysis.
A second.
Motion made second twice. Any further discussion? CNN, all's in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for holding on to your brakes.
Thanks, everyone.
I kept mine behind me, so I'm not tempted.
That's right, yeah. That can be dangerous.
You're not bringing brakes to me.
Yeah, I know.
I trust this group.
That's right.
So, like I said, we're gonna postpone the presentation by the Board of Assessors to a future...
Randy extends his apologies to everyone, but he sounded terrible, unfortunately, in the following.
So let's take Beth Whirling from the Craft Group. Good night.
Beth Whirling, Planning and Construction Manager with the Craft Group, and this is John Cattell.
John Cattell, JKS. How's everybody doing?
This is one of those unusual requests that doesn't always come up to the board. So in, in the case that the board is required to grant a permit to do overnight work, so that's the reason why Beth is here. This is a project that's gonna require some overnight work to be done at the, at the, at the site. And so both the police chief and the building commissioner, I think, are somehow involved in that decision. But it still ultimately comes back to the board.
From your bylaws, it indicates that it's Board of Selectmen and Police Chief, but we've consulted...
We're actually looking at some amendments to the bylaw to see if we can, if that really makes sense. But it is what it is right now, so that's why, the reason why they're here.
Yep. As Bill said, we're in front of you tonight to obtain an overnight work permit for work associated with demolition of the existing building K, which is circled and red on that plan, at Patriot Place, and construction of a new five-story, 155,000-square-foot mixed-use office, medical office building. There'll be retail and restaurant space on the first floor, with medical and general office on the upper floors. We've recently received site plan approval from the planning board in August, and have worked with the fire department to address their safety concerns, and are looking to incorporate those into a final plan, which we'll bring before the planning board for endorsement next Thursday. So...
So that building is the one that's located right adjacent to the current Mass General Brigham of Women's facility?
Correct.
So it's, right, right.
So that's the block in, like, the far corner, Dunkin' Donuts, and then Splitville's across from it?
Further down, next one down. It's, it's, the old Reebok store was in that one, in that one?
Yeah, that's kinda looking north from, if you're inside the stadium, looking north towards Route 1.
If you look at this building here, is where Scorpion Bar is.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
And it crosses where the, the other two restaurants are.
Barlowe.
Right. So this is the view from the stadium, so to speak, right?
Gotcha, okay.
I just wanted to point out on the overhead aerial in here, the construction site is on the interior of Patriot Place, and residential locations are on the outskirts. We wrote from where it is interior, for work noise. I'll let John review our timeline.
So we're, you know, first step obviously is clearing the site of the existing structure, so we're looking to get started as early as, right now, the plan is to start this Sunday, the 24th. The duration of the Core and Shell project, which is all the exterior work that, that affects the, the traffic flow and the ongoing operations of Patriot Place, which requires this, you know, off-hours work, basically gets us through October 31st of 2018. So just over a year to get the building demolished and the new structure up and skinned in tight to the weather. That's a portion of work that we're doing as of right now. And then, you know, a following project would do the interior fit-up. So we have multiple phases along the way, all of which, any, you know, throughout that entire duration, there's gonna be times when we're gonna have to go off-hours, much to the dismay of, of our guys maybe, but, you know, just something that has to be done. Obviously, very congested. We're restricting traffic flow as it is, just with our perimeter of the site for our safety and the safety of the pedestrians, so it's gonna be even tighter as we move forward. So hoping, hoping that everybody is open to that option of nighttime work. So right now, our shift would be Sunday through Thursday, to avoid the Friday, Saturday night crowds associated with Patriot Place, 11 o'clock at night till 7 o'clock in the morning. And of course, we'll be working a normal day shift, Monday through Friday.
So overnight's gonna, gonna take place straight through demo, through the, through the creation of the exterior envelope?
It will not be a continuous shift, but there are certainly steps along the way that would have us, every step, for, for example, we have street and utility connections, both at the beginning and at the end. Demolition, obviously, that's just kind of a noisy operation. Steel erection, more for traffic flow, getting the bigger trucks in and out. And then, of course, we have that connector bridge, which gets towards the tail end, which obviously we have to shut down all traffic in order to do that. And then finishing that has to happen at night, because we're, you know, we're right there in front of the main entrance of the existing medical office building.
Questions from the board?
I mean, I probably live the closest in anticipation of a horror show when they were constructing this. There's, I can't imagine any impact that any of the neighbors are gonna see from this. I think, any way we can help you to expedite it, but, you know, I'm assuming that public safety and planning board and all that steps have been met. I just don't see any impact that. The only thing that I would suggest is if this sets precedence for other construction jobs, which may impact neighbors, you know, to think of that. But on this one, I don't see any issues.
Yeah, this is rather unique in itself.
It's also very insulated being in the middle there. You know, buff it down any noise and...
Yeah.
I'm actually quite pleased to see the morphing of the, of the development. So it's kind of the change of the times.
Yeah.
Because the need is, is coming, it's evolving.
Moving a little bit away from retail.
Moving away from the retail into, into this kind of a use, which I think is really reflective of where the market is.
Yeah, it's a really nice-looking building. I think at the end of the day, a nice addition up there.
It sort of, it reemphasizes the need that, I think you're seeing in the region, a greater emphasis on, on bringing medical out to this area and taking it out of Boston, because it's, it's becoming more connected to the, to the actual need in here, in this, in this area, and the, and the residents out here. So it's great to see that.
Just one other question, doesn't, no bearing on it. The bottom floor of that is gonna go back to be in retail?
Okay. The new building will have a mix of retail and restaurant uses.
I think there's one chunk for interior offices as well.
Yes, so the, the retail and restaurant uses will face Route 1. And then in the back, there's a space for some office.
Now, what's good about that is the fact that the people that will work there will use those spaces. So it's a, it's like built, it's a built-in market, right into the building.
That's great.
It's a great concept.
Don't have to worry about parking.
That's right.
Great.
Okay, there's no more questions? Kind of a motion?
Yeah, move to approve overnight construction work at Patriots Place.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? CNN, all's in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Make sure you save us a brick, will you?
Yeah, apparently we're collecting these lately.
Those actually are probably newer bricks.
Yeah.
One. Special town meeting update?
You wanna provide that?
Sure. You should have in your board docs the current spreadsheet. It's, right now, it says updated 9/19. It's showing 12 articles. There are some potential other articles being discussed that aren't shown on here. Just not certain yet from departments where, whether there's enough time or whatever. But going through what you have on your, on your sheet, Article 1 is budget adjustments for town common fence repair costs and public safety staffing study, two budget articles in one. Article number two are municipal charges lien. It's a statute acceptance that, I believe, is that the municipal modernization one?
Yeah.
Yeah. The third one is fire contract. We're currently in negotiations with an eye towards, you know, having some really strong information to you in the, by the next meeting. We're in discussions with the group, and it's going well right now. Article number four is for the steelworkers contract. We have two groups, A and B. We're making progress on, on that as well. It's a two-part process, coming up with a compensation plan, and then actually bargaining a successor contract. So we continue to make pros, progress on that, and we'll keep you posted. The charter school reimbursement, that was, if you recall, a letter that we received from Lowell. I believe that is, you know, it's a not, the timing on that isn't certain, but we sent a letter of support regarding charter school reimbursement, so we're holding that, that article as we continue to get you more information.
Right. The board expressed, you know, your own support for, for your own legislation on that.
Right. The next one is the street acceptance from the planning department of Annette Road. A zoning article put forward by zoning board on prohibiting undesirable uses in the downtown. I don't have the, the text on that yet. Number eight is appropriating funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be used by the housing authority on Wellness Street project. There'll be more specifics on that after next week. That's, again, after the Thursday night planning board meeting, we'll have more information. Item number nine is something that came up at our recent Fox Cares meeting. It's the acceptance of Chapter 33B. We realized that the town never accepted the 10:00 AM Sunday service of alcohol for establishments, and in order for you to grant an early opening, this even includes things like Mother's Day brunch, stuff like that. The town would need to adopt this, so that's on there for that reason. Article 10 and 11 are stormwater, it should say stormwater A and stormwater B. Town council will be drafting those. I believe those are in conjunction with the MS4 permitting unfunded mandate process. And we're awaiting text on that again. And number 12 is a marijuana zoning modification required by the Attorney General. That's been advised that the town adopt zoning on, on that. So some additional things that you may, you may see. There could be a land swap for a parcel of land by the Station One Water Land. There's a small strip of land that we may look to do a, a land swap on. Roger Hill will have more information on that. The item that came before you tonight was an item of discussion at our recent operations meeting, the hours of work. Right now, it's a Board of Selectmen and Police Chief vote. I think the Police Chief piece is because of the noise ordinance. The Police Chief and Town Manager and Building Commissioner were talking about, we wanna see maybe some, a switch in who approves it. Police Chief thinks it should be Building Commissioner, so maybe looking, exploring that language. It may or not be ready for the, for this list of warrant articles. Right now, Caitlin is working with Chief Baker on the Hawker peddler language. Right now, none of our bylaws actually mention that license, and we do issue that license, so it's clarifying having bylaw language with regard to that. Did I explain that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And another thing that came up that may not be ready for the town meeting is having a drone ordinance, with the popularity of drones. We wanna talk to public safety and zoning and building about the idea of maybe drafting some sort of a drone ordinance. But right now, it looks like anywhere up to 16 articles could be potential. And as you know, based on your opinion and what we're ready to present as well, so a few things may drop off.
On the sheet, do we have 58 when we have to close by?
Yes, 10/3.
10/3?
October 3rd, yeah.
Oh, October.
So we basically have one more meeting.
Right.
A lot of information to come in one more meeting.
Well, I'll just close the warrant. I mean, then you can start looking at the individual articles.
You can still drop them off after that. We just can't accept anything new after that, but...
If anybody wants to submit something in the public, anything like that, that's, that would be their closing point, too.
And if the four that I mentioned get close to real, we'll put them on for next time, but otherwise, they'll just drop to the bottom for the annual town meeting. So were there any questions on any of those?
Yeah, number 12. Do you know the town voted to prohibit, we still have to do the zoning modification?
I think it, a recent advisory came out from the Attorney General's office saying that there should be a clarification on adoption of a zoning piece on that. So even though we voted it down, there should still be an area that, that is zoned or not zoned for that.
There was one, another article too, that Ginny had brought to our attention about having, not allowing the public use of marijuana in public places.
That could be maybe included.
No one needs to be allowed in.
That could be included in this. I'm not sure about the language on this. I think we had just a line from legal counsel on it, but we'll have, we're starting to collect the text on all of these, so we can explain them next time, when they get real. Do you have anything else that you were thinking of including?
What did happen to the guy down at Job Lot, Bradley's Plaza, that wanted to make a license?
Oh, hops and grapes, huh?
Yeah, he, we've never...
He didn't wanna fight.
Yeah.
He didn't wanna, he says, okay, I'll, I'll bide my time.
Yeah, I'm probably just gonna wait, wait and see. I've not heard anything in a while, so...
So that's where we're at. So that's where we're at.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Selectmen's update, let's have a couple of things. The Veteran Services did another, another great job on Saturday with the Remembrance for POW, MIA, the twenty-four hour vigil and the ceremony afterwards. It's, it's one of those things where you don't know really whether to celebrate the, you know, the families and, you know, the people that persevere through all this, or is it Psalm? It's one of those, you know, you want to be thankful, but you don't want to be too down, you want to be upbeat, and so it's, I always struggle with that one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a real conflict with emotions.
Yeah, it's one of those things where you don't know how to really respond to them, because you don't know what they've been through, what they're going through, but you want them to know that, you know, you're behind them a hundred percent.
Never forget.
Being there is the way.
But, you know, Mike did a great job, as always, so, that was good. I was fortunate to participate in the Ponte Valley Walk to End Alzheimer's on Saturday, took part in the opening ceremonies, which was pretty cool.
Excellent.
It's a great turnout, we had between three and four thousand people there. Another, you know, horrible disease that, you know, just, if you know anybody that's been afflicted with it, it's terrible.
Bride the bullet, hey.
So another, another great, a great cause going on, people walking and, you know. One of the speakers in the opening ceremonies, he's fifty-five years old, has early onset Alzheimer's, pretty impressive guy, so that was, that was a great day.
It was a nice day for it, too.
Oh, it was a beautiful day, beautiful day, and, you know, Kraft Group did a great job, as always, but, you know, it was, it was very well attended. It's, I have, anybody have anything else? Chris, how was McGinty?
Yeah, McGinty Day was a really good, good turnout, weather, thirteen years in Rome, Mike McGinty has never had it rain on us, so we had about five hundred people that registered, so it was good.
It's great. And we had the day at the, at the nine eleven Remembrance Day, at the, at the monument as well.
Public safety did a great job.
They did a good job with that.
Thank you to all the poll workers that are wrapping up now in five minutes.
That reminds me, everybody who voted, thank you. Everybody that didn't have time or forgot about it, you know, what can you say? You know, you have an opportunity to, to vote, whether you're Republican, Democrat, unenrolled, independent, you have the power to vote, you have the power to express your voice, take advantage of it. Because in the end, if you don't like what's going on, you can't complain about it if you don't vote, so.
I'm off my, my vote. No, I mean, you know, you think it's a state-type level election, but how many times have we interacted with the state senator or the House of Representatives that they're in front of the selectmen all the time, and it's an important position, so.
They're the town's conduit to Beacon Hill.
Without question.
You're up.
All right, so some good news to report. On the heels of receiving a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the federal government, we're pleased to report that we received another one point five million dollar grant for the region for the, for the new Semerick Southeastern Massachusetts Regional Communications Center. On behalf of the Mass, the Department of Public Safety for the state of Massachusetts. So we're very, very pleased that we've been working with the towns of Mansfield, the town of Foxborough, the town of Norton, and town of Easton, working collectively on this effort to pull this together for a long, long time. This board, along with the other three boards in the region, supported this process unanimously. Just to be clear, we received a one point five million dollar grant, our original request was for five million, but it's, but it's going to be a process over several years to do this. We don't really need all the five million upfront right now, because there's several phases of this that we're going to go through, but it is actually right on time with what we're expecting to do. So we're moving ahead with that process rather expeditiously, we just were notified Friday, I've already spoken with State nine one one a couple of times, they reached out to me with an advice, with a contract today for the money, so we're going to be moving, moving pretty quickly on this process. The, the interviews for the executive director are going to be this Friday, so we're very hopeful that we have a terrific candidate that we can present to take over this effort, so that we can all, it's like a step back a little bit, but, you know, still be involved, but let the director sort of help, help guide the director through the process. And so we're very excited about, about this opportunity.
Is the rest of that grant guaranteed that we will get it, or?
Well, here's what, here's what they told me directly yesterday at State nine one one, they said, every one of the communities that we've, we've started with and supported, we've carried them through all the way through the process. So we've not, we've never stopped in that process, so, so when they said to me that we're making a one point five million dollar grant, which is probably one of the biggest ones I've ever given, right off the bat, they basically said, we're going to be with you to the end of this. So the answer is, there's no guarantees in life, but what their track record has shown is that they've actually fulfilled that. Now, the difference in this funding cycle is that this is not funding that's coming from the state budget, this is money that comes from, it just comes right off the cellphone charge that you get, so there's a directed revenue stream into this program. So we have the money available, and it's not directed anywhere else but this program, so it's a good, it's a good sign. So we're very optimistic about where we, where we are, and I think what we got is pretty much where we predicted where we're going to be. So I'm, actually, I think we got a little bit more than what I thought we were going to get originally, so I was actually pleased to see that.
A lot of, a lot of work that you guys did on that collectively.
Thank you, it's been a, been a great effort by everybody. Some, just to follow up on one of the programs that the board supported and the town went forward on was the Foxborough Power Ford Program, that was the electric aggregation program that we started several months ago. And the updated program report that we got from, from March through June shows that the total electricity for all aggregation participants was eleven million two hundred and seventy-eight kilowatt hours that have been, that have been generated through the program. Current participation as of six thirty seventeen, this is, these are, there's about six thousand households in town, we have five thousand three hundred and fourteen people participating in the program. So that's really, it's good, and so the opt-out rate of the program lots is seven percent, which is actually a little bit lower than the, than the average, which is close to about ten percent. The residual residential use and participation is four thousand seven sixty-six, and the total residential use is eight thou, eight million, eight, two hundred and sixty-eight million, eight million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand kilowatt hours. Average monthly residential use is five hundred and seventy-one kilowatt hours. Non-residential use is five hundred and forty-eight, the commercial is five hundred and twenty-two, and industrial is twenty-six. So total non-residential use is three million kilowatt hours, commercial is one point, one point eight million, and industrial is one point, one point two. So the Power Ford green participation, unfortunately, has only had three people participate in it, so you have a green option, we can go into this, so you can strictly, you know, solar, or it could be wind, wind production, and it's, they're not even, people, the people just haven't been chosen, maybe just they don't know about enough, and so it needs, probably needs a little more advertising, but there's only three people that have, that have gone through that. It actually turns out that this is a really good time for people to be involved in the program because the rates are starting to decline, and we're guaranteed, our rates are guaranteed until October of two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, the folks on Basic Service are going to start getting their winter rates.
Right.
I think October.
Right. So if you haven't, if you, if you're coming off contract, this is a really good option for you right now, because that rate is still a pretty good rate, so. One other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention was that Paige Duncan has worked with me and a few other folks to try and come up with a, a regional grant opportunity that might come through the, for the tourism, the Economic Development Fund for the, for the gaming commission. And it turns out there's several million dollars available for regional economic development, based on that, that program, and not many people have applied. So Paige came up with, came up with an idea of creating a regional tourism program that would help, if you take a look at the three points of Patriot Place, with the, with the gaming facility in Plainville, as well as the, the Rent the Village outlets, you've got a really a nice triangle of participation there, which would create, looking to create possibly a bus that would connect all three sites, and then possibly draw more people into the, into the region that would stay more than just a day, maybe stay two days, and help, help the regional economy in that, in that way. So the Boston Bureau of Tourism actually thought it was a great idea, so they thought it would be a good thing for us to participate, to pursue it. We have submitted an application, we're going to wait and see what happens, but they, the reaction from everyone who's, who's looked at it has said this is a great idea, so we'll wait and see, we may get some, we may get some real money for that. One thing that hasn't gone forward, it won't go forward in two thousand eighteen, it was a Tough Mudder project. We unfortunately received news that we couldn't coordinate a date that worked in, in June of two thousand eighteen with Gelekt, there's a number of different conflicts with their schedules, so we couldn't make that work for the next year. We're still having conversations about possibility in two thousand nineteen, but they are going to be having an event in Massachusetts just the same, and so they, they moved to Charlton for next year, there's a new course that's being developed out there for, for two thousand eighteen, and they'll see, we'll see if that, how successful that is. They still expressed an interest in coming here, so we'll still see what happens and see if that's a possibility or not. Some difficult news to, to report to you, but our executive assistant, Marsha O'Malley, has decided to, to move on. We're all very sad to see that happen, because she's been a terrific asset to us all, and she is taking on a position at Stonehill College, so we really wish her nothing but the best. It's a great opportunity for her, one that she's been connected to, that college for quite some time, and we're very, very happy for her, but very sad, very sad for us, so we wish her nothing but the best. So I'm ready to tell you a little bit about where we are and how we're trying to close the gap on that situation, while, during the, during the transitional phase, and that we're looking at how we can evaluate the position even further, even though it's only been a couple of years, about three years since we filled that position. So again, sorry to see her go, but we are very grateful for all her service. Town Hall final demolition has, has steps of being, being done, they should be done this week in terms of all the demolition on the site, we're going to start grading the site as early as next week. Autovisual tools in the building have been added this week to the new town hall, and so we're getting final, getting closer to the final day, and we'll be moving into there permanently with, with meetings, et cetera. And one other thing that the police chief and myself have been working on with the mass managers, that we're doing a presentation later next week on Thursday up at Fort Devens, the mass managers and the police chiefs are doing a joint meeting on the topic of civil rights and race relations in the police department. Obviously, a very, very challenging issue for every city in town in Massachusetts and across the country to deal with, and the chief has got a lot of background and experience in this area, and so he's going to be giving a presentation along with, we're going to have a, a sort of a discussion and debate among cities and towns, as to what we can do to improve that, that situation through each one of our cities and towns. It's not, it's something that, it doesn't affect everybody, every one of us directly, but indirectly, and you never know when, when the issue could evolve and pop up in your community, so we want to be ahead of the curve and try to address it. And then finally, there's been some discussion about the possibility of creating a volunteer space in and around the town hall, and, and this is something that, I've talked with Jim about this, and I'm going to have Jim speak, speak to a little bit. But we have, and this issue came up during, during the past year or so, when the passing of Neil Forrester, who was, as we know, was a terrific contributor to this community and a volunteer status. And we thought there should be a way that which we can, we can celebrate the, the service and the commitment that folks have as volunteers to help make this community work. And what better way to, to start doing that by having something located in and around the new town hall space that we have just created? And this is a beautiful space that people in the community really think it's, is really well done, and we get a lot of compliments from, from people outside the community about it. And so we thought it would be nice if we could somehow create a space that would help, that will dedicate some, some space for the, for the volunteerism that people have given back to this community, and so give back to them a little bit. So I'll turn it over to Jim, if you want to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, not, not too much detail at this time, but, I mean, you summed it up well, it was an idea that, you know, we, we built this nice town hall, and the workers are in it, but it's, it's a nice way to say thank you back to the volunteers, the committees, the individuals, and it's not the recent ones, it's generations.
Generations, right.
Spent, you know, their time and resources to do things in town, so right now, we're looking at maybe an outside sitting area where there's a place where you can meet, whether the town hall's open or not, that you go there, you get some inspiration, you get some awareness of all the different people or groups that have worked in town, and, you know, we don't want to tax the volunteers to say contributors to this, we're hoping the town will figure out a way to make it work.
Right.
I'll reach out, and if there's anyone interested in coming with ideas, I've got a few, some people have come, you know, maybe a little piece of art, a sitting area, a type of tree or something that you can sit there, and then read about the volunteers or the people, and, you know, share ideas and share resources and keep it going, so. You know, Foxborough is such a, I don't know any sector that doesn't have committees or groups or friends of that just keeps this going, which saves, you know, tremendous tax dollars and keeps fresh ideas, so that's what we're trying to accomplish, we don't know what yet, but we're thinking maybe by the time that there's a ribbon cutting at the town hall, when we finish the parking lot and open it up, there's at least a concept or a design board that we can put together that says this is the next step, and this is where it's going to be, so. If you guys have ideas, or if anyone from home that wants to give ideas, let me know, and we'll work it in.
It's strictly a concept at this time, but we think it's an opportunity to sort of give back to, to all the work that people, people offer to the community. All right?
Thank you.
So, okay, that's all I have.
Okay. I just have a few updates. As Bill said, we're interviewing the Semerick Executive Director final round this Friday, we've kept the process going while we awaited the grant, and I'm glad that we did, because now the timing will work out. We'll keep you posted on, on what happens with that. We didn't expect to have to work on the executive assistant job posting, we were fortunate that Marcia gave us about almost three weeks, so last week we worked on getting a temporary person in to pop in and just sort of do the mind transfer from Marcia over the next two weeks. We'll bring her to a future meeting for you to meet, her name is Lisa Plant, she's a military veteran, recently relocated from Born, where she worked at Otis, she was, she did four years of active duty, I believe, she was stationed in Alaska for part of it, and then she worked at Otis most recently. She has worked in municipal government, and she's worked in Board of Health inspections, and she's been a volunteer VSO, Veteran Services Officer in Franklin, where she now lives, so.
Has good executive support.
Yeah, great resume, she was available, so she popped in today, and I think we're going to have her be there for, you know, until we get the job posted and figured out. Like we do with, every time we have a vacancy, we try to take a step back and look at the position and see, you know, we look at, think about our compensation strategy, we think about how the job or, or the, you know, the town has changed, so we're really taking of the rest of the week to look at this posting and think about how we want to proceed. You know, we have the compensation strategy that we've talked to you about, making sure we have market equity, internal equity, but we also want to make sure, you know, we want to keep things affordable as well. So we're looking at that posting, looking at the pieces of it, and we'll, we'll be posting that shortly, but lucky for us, we found a temporary person who's very qualified to, to. But lucky for us, we found a temporary person who's very qualified to step in. And it's always good when someone's a veteran as well, so. We posted today, as a result of our good fortune with the Safer Grant, we posted the four firefighter/paramedic positions that the board recently approved. So for all of you aspiring firefighter/paramedics out there, that job posting went up today. We have a lot of interviews underway right now. We had some internal, we had a retirement at DPW for mechanic supervisor and one of the mechanics, we promoted one of the mechanics into it, so now we're interviewing for his replacement. We had a change in Board of Health, so now we are, we filled the position internally. So now we're filling a sanitarian assistant health agent position, working with the Building Department on a part-time 10-hour position that they have posted to work in their department, working on that as well. So there's a lot of things going on, a lot of things happening with regard to that. And we are in active contract negotiations, again, with fire and steelworkers to the idea that we'd like to get you a document by the time, you know, in preparation. And now we're actively involved in, well, we're working on police proposals right now. Just want to report, as the chair of the Mass Municipal Personnel Association, I think I've mentioned that, I'm the chair. We held our first-ever two-day conference this year with 80 HR, municipal HR, town administrators attending. We had a waiting list of 30 people and we had some of the great legal minds presenting at it. It was a great success and I was pleased that we could launch it and a lot of communities benefited from, it was a very inexpensive way to do two days of HR training, so I was pleased with that. And just want to mention for employees and retirees out there, our health fair is taking place on September 28th. Employees will, there are, we have tons of vendors, we have all of our retirement and benefit plans there. It's going to be at the Ahern Middle School from 11 to 4:00. It's a great event every year and you learn about benefit options, you can get a flu shot, all kinds of stuff. So just wanted to announce that, but that's all that I have.
Great. You would think one of the, some of the more difficult jobs to fill, mechanics. Just not out there.
Say that again?
Mechanics.
Oh, oh, oh.
Mechanics for a garage. You just can't, you can't find them. I mean, we, fortunate, we did get, what, about 10 people?
We know we had 26 applicants. We're going to meet two tomorrow.
I mean, a lot of them, you get a lot of people that aren't quite qualified, but to find a good qualified mechanic is not, is not an easy position to find.
Well, they work on buses, they work on the big diesel engines, but then they also need how to, you know, how to do the sidewalk plows and, you know, it has to be really...
Kind of a jack-of-all-trades.
And now with all the technology, that's a whole new training, so.
It's a whole different set of skill sets.
It's really complicated to recruit that position.
I didn't think it was going to be like that, to be honest with you, but it was kind of surprised me, but it really is difficult.
Do you reach out to places like New England Tech?
Yeah, we do.
We actually, you know, really, we went to the technical schools, we went to Norwood, the unemployment center that has, you know, vocational board. We really spread it out this time. We did it on some of the public works sites as well. But, you know, in contrast to where we get a couple of hundred for our openings, we got 26 for this one. So hopefully we'll find the right candidate.
Motion made.
Okay, move to approve a 5K road race for the Sage School, starting and ending at 171 Mechanic Street on Saturday, May 5th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Move to accept an early liquor license request for Bar Louie of 11:00 AM on New England Patriots Sunday Home Games of 9:24, 10:1, 10:29, 11:26, 12:24, and 12:31.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Right. Move to approve early liquor license request for big night venues, DBA Scorpion Bar and Mexican Cantina of 11:00 AM on New England Patriots Sunday Home Games of 9:24, 10:1, 10:29, 11:16, 12:24, and 12:31 17.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion?
Just under, I think it's posted as 11:16, but it should be 11:26. I think the letter is correct.
Yeah.
Oh, it does have it on the other, other two, yeah, I'm sorry.
All's in favor?
Aye. Move to accept an early liquor license request for the Olive Garden of 11:00 AM on New England Patriots Sunday Home Games of 9:24, 10:1, 10:29, 11:26, 12:24, and 12:31 17.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
And to the chair, just quick, if, so one of the articles, you've noticed we cannot approve liquor licenses earlier than 10?
It has to be 11.
Has to be. 11 is the earliest we can do.
11 is the earliest. You can do it until you adopt that.
Until you adopt, you fix the, we can adopt a bylaw that allows, or a statute that allows us to go open it at 10.
The state has a statute, we just never, we found out we never adopted it.
Interesting, okay.
So if we adopt that statute, all these...
It just gives you the option to approve it.
They still have to come and ask permission, but now they'll be saying 10 instead of 11 if it were an event that warranted it.
Okay, so we still have to approve early opening?
Right.
Okay.
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverage license for the Boydin Library for the Spiny Speaker Series Presents. Nathalia Holt on September 28th, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverage license for Normandy Farms Campground LLC for a food truck festival on 11/4/2017 from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
My wife works at Normandy Farms.
So you're out.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. One recusal.
Okay, fair enough.
Move to accept a gift donation of a signed New England Patriots picture for the town hall from the Craft Group.
I knew I was going to forget to bring it.
I carried the bricks, so I forgot.
I'll bring it to the next meeting, all right? Sorry about that.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion?
It's phenomenal, if you haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, it's really nice. They did it really nice, just beautiful.
All's in favor?
We're going to hang it in the town hall, in one of the conference rooms.
Four pictures.
Of the football, of the Super Bowl.
So it's Brady, White, who are the other two?
Edelman.
Brady, White, Edelman, and, oh, Edelman's catch and Hightower's sack, strip sack. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $50 to Veteran Services from Janet Zangetti from the, for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $150 to the Council on Aging for half of history lecture with Paolo from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Move to approve the Robman Ride for Kids, a nonprofit cycling event on 9/23/17 from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
We'll do them one at a time. Move to approve the 8/27, 8/22/17 Board of Selectmen's Minutes.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
I'm going to recuse myself for that one. I wasn't at that meeting.
I'm not at the next meeting either, so.
Move to approve the 9/14/17 Board of Selectmen's Minutes.
There's only two of us that were there. Jeanne wasn't here. Should we wait on this?
We should just wait on it.
Yeah. That's it?
Nope.
Best Pro Shops, DBA.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading off the...
Is that a late entry?
Yeah.
Easy for me to read off the sheet.
Sorry about that. Let me bring it down.
Okay, there we go. Move to accept an early liquor license request to Bass Pro Shops, DBA, the Bluefin Lounge of an 11:00 AM on New England Patriots Sunday Home Games of 9:24, 10:1, 10:29, 11:26, 12:24, and 12:31 17.
Second.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor? Anything else? Nope.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.